I call the meeting to order at 7:11 and state that the notice for the regular city council meeting was duly posted. We'll have the pledge by Chief Ferris.
I would like to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations. I have several people who signed up for public comments. Bruce Zabouraski, please state your name and address and remember you have three minutes.
Bruce Zabouraski, 7915 Chancel Drive, Houston, Texas. I see that we had a meeting here this earlier about the golf course. Council needs to remember that the children in Fawn Meadows still have no way to even get to their playground, so continuing dumping money into a bottomless pit isn't going to help the rest of Missouri City. I've never heard back from my councilman about the status of a bridge, so I guess there's going to be no bridge. So you can continue to watch the children walk through a canal, I don't know God what's in there, and get to a playground, but you're more worried about the golf course, needing repairs, needing this, needing that. Like I said before, you run Missouri City like feudal Europe. Some areas get everything, the rest of it gets scraps. You had a presentation about taking over the water and sewer districts. That's another nightmare, that the only people make money off of those are the lawyers, accountants, and different engineering companies that milk these things out of all kinds of money. Why are our water rates double what they are in Houston? That's something Missouri City needs to look at. I know water's expensive, everything begins to cost more money, but neighboring communities pay a lot less than we do in Fawn Meadow. There again, no plan by the city of Houston, doesn't look like that's going to go anywhere because you're too timid to probably take it on. So let's go with the status quo, make certain parts of Missouri City great, and let the rest of it suffer. Our part would be better off if we were in the city limits of Houston. The kids already go to Houston schools, Houston police have a quicker presence in the neighborhood. Missouri City's just too spread out. You ought to just think of trying to get rid of the Harris County part and let us become part of Houston. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Clark.
My name's Brenda Clark. I reside at 3418 La Costa Road. You'll probably hit me on three minutes. Okay. I have a lot written out and I'm probably not going to say as much as I am inclined to say, but I am going to talk about this interlocal agreement that was just discussed at the special agenda. I'm going to take a deep breath. I have some concerns. Firstly, I have always stood up here and talked about Stafford following our standard operating procedures and their lack of this interlocal agreement. They're talking about things that happened in 2018. It is mid-year of 2019. Most of these changes have occurred and are occurring, but they have only done so in the last 90 days. They are vaccinating their dogs. We are taking them to adoption events, we being volunteers, because they are now being vaccinated, because we can, because they don't pose a medical threat, and because we have really tried hard to make sure that their dogs get neutered and/or altered spade before an adoption. I am concerned what this interlocal agreement means. Is it just being done out of a financial incentive to the city of Missouri City, Texas, or because Stafford has also realized how financially impossible it is to build what they want to build, which I pray they can eventually do so? This is not about me not wanting to be friendly with our city of Stafford. This is my concern about how this affects our shelter, and maybe even more so, how does this affect our shelter manager? Tabora Goffney has worked her butt off since she's been hired. She is fantastic. There is a cohesive functioning going on between volunteers and her and getting these dogs out alive and doing well. Is she now going to also assume another job role of managing Stafford? I don't really understand what Stacy's job is. I like Stacy, I think she's doing a great job, but I've been a little, if I am, I'm sure many are, I'm confused exactly what her role is, because it's been kind of tiptoed back. She was a consultant, but now she's going to be also facilitating and coordinating with Tabora as a consultant from Stafford with our city of Missouri City pets. I'd just like further definition. I'm not sure who that person is that does that. I'm happy to talk to Stacy directly. Many of our volunteers, we have 30 volunteers on our roster, eight people show up every week, eight out of 30. There should be some communication that's transparent about some of these changes. I am really upset that that meeting just occurred to an empty chamber, and why is that? Was it not advertised? Something really important just happened, and nobody from the city of Missouri City heard it. And I'm sure I'm out of time. Thank you.
Alan Silver.
I sat through a meeting last week that was very dictatorial, and I'll warn you all of this. It's called the zoning committee. It was very frustrating, because the people that wanted to build the super church got all the time they wanted before, and then those who opposed it were limited in time. And the super church people got to speak again afterwards. Now, what this committee did, it seemed out from the beginning that they wanted to change the zone. The zone, which is the last part of any retail we have over there, and they want to pay it entirely for this super church. Now, the interesting thing is, they already have a super church on Fondren that is about two or three stories, and there are two other Christian churches there, too. And this guy has come out of elsewhere, somebody, some say he came from Africa, I don't know, and they listened to him and not to nine people who came from Fondren Park. Not a one of them favored the church. Now, they then made some modifications. The first time, they couldn't get a majority. So a former member of the, former person who lived in Fondren Park and who's moved out, went ahead and got modifications, which he claimed would satisfy those about flooding and stuff. But mine, there was nothing for it, because he's make sure, they make sure they're going to knock out what I pointed out. Mine was different. We are five miles from the nearest theater, which is over here at the fountains. Every other one is 10 or 15. You talk about First Colony, you talk about over there on Wesleyan, you talk about in Pearland, there's two theaters. None of them have been, all of them have been knocked out by warehouses and everything else. Number two, there's not a major grocery store within five miles of my house. You have to go to Highway 6, seven or eight miles away, or where my wife goes, to a Kroger's and Randall's at the Meyer Park area, which is at 610 and South Post Oak. Now, the same thing is true of restaurants and entertainment centers. You go out and look, I'll be happy to take any of y'all and take you around. And I'm asking particularly those people in A, B, C, and D, because y'all don't have a church. I asked the hands of everyone there, there's one person on that committee from the Fondren Park area. None of them have super churches by them. But a four to three vote voted to send this thing to y'all, and when it comes up, as I close out, I'll be back here again against it, and I hope y'all are going to be against it.
J.C. Heig.
I come for you today to help me get some open records acts I've been requesting since 2018. I came here last council meeting and talked to James, I guess, the city, I guess you're filling in for the city attorney because, one of your employees, I asked you to talk to him before the 10th, because some of this has turned criminal. Okay? Fell on deaf ears. More stuff was stolen from my property this weekend. Okay? I've been demanding releases of videos and stuff. I fell on deaf ears from the city attorney and from the police department. The stuff that was removed from my property this weekend, I already talked to Chief Brezner about this, he said, "Well, it must have been a rookie, because anything removed that should have been by a deputy." So now the officer's waiting to make sure that these cases that I said I won, won in front of Judge Clouser. And I was ignorant to the law, and I filed a bill of review. I go in front of Judge Clouser, he goes, "Are you crazy? You won. What'd you file a bill of review for?" Now I have to open this case, review it, and he's got a lawyer with him, and if you lose again, you're going to pay his lawyer fees. And since there's one of your city employees involved in taking this, a code officer, Douglas Gilmore, I can't get the police department to take a report on this. And so this weekend, and so I go to back to Judge Clouser, they get him, they go, "Well, that officer could have went online and found out. He took the other side's deals," even though I was the only one that could produce anything, "stand from Clouser, I won this twice. He took the other guy saying he had these other documents." Well, I didn't know you'd go online and get that, because I'm a flip phone person, you know? And so he goes, "You don't have to get that. You can relate that, too. So please let Officer 893 know that I won both times at Clouser." He said, "If I can prove that I won, that he would turn this into a criminal case and go get my stuff back." So thank you, Mayor Ford. I'd like to have a liaison from your office, because I've been trying for over two years to get this stuff, and now I asked, this went crazy, I came here in April, said, "Hey, from now on, I want all my stuff to go to Ross and Gary's, Ron Real's office." And the next email from Gary was way after that, like a seventh, when I had to get a private investigator to go find my stuff. And now, that's the only email from the state. Well, now, since these are open records apps, Boris Miles has gave me a liaison Santiago Diaz, I'll get the city secretary, from now on, he wants to be carbon copied on all my open records apps and why I was refused of them. So please, I'm begging you, give my records, so I can get them to the DA, Brian Middleton, who's waiting for them, and I can't get, I can't even get a copy of them. And I hope this is video, because one of the major videos I wanted was one someone represents himself as Attorney General of Fort Bend County, where there's no such office in Overroad, Attorney General of Texas. That video has been lost, destroyed, overthrown. I've been denied.
Mr. Hugh, you've now reached your time. Thank you.
I've asked the state, so please help me.
That is all we have for public comments. We'll have city manager announcements, city manager's nights.
Mayor Ford, thank you very much. Hope everyone had a great weekend. One of the things that I wanted to share related to some updates, I think I've shared that with the council most recently in my city manager's report. I know we hear a lot about what the city isn't doing in the Fondren area, but the city this year, in the last three months, have invested in Gamal Park, where our Parks Department has refurbished Gamal Park as well as McLean Park with a large number of investments. Clearly, it's never enough in any one particular area, but that department and my office understood the importance of investment, and I encourage our residents, as well as you, if you have an opportunity, to go by and see some of the investment that the city of Missouri City has placed in those two locations in that particular area. I was very happy to hear the update related to the animal shelter this evening. We've come a long way, and as I stated, we have ways to go, but I think having a partnership is a beginning, and our hope is that we'll be able to continue to share that information to the community. As you know, we post these meetings to the community to share with them what would be on the agenda, and our hope is that our communications department, based on this great partnership, will be able to send the information out to all of the key stakeholders as it relates to this inroads that we've made in partnership with the city of Stafford. As you may already know, the city's contractor will be closing the bridge at Glen Lakes Lane near Howland Lakes Drive. We've put that information out via our communications department. That will be closed for traffic on Monday, July 29th, for the reconstruction project. Static signs and message boards in the eastbound and westbound lanes are already in place to alert all of our commuters of upcoming closures. In addition, our traffic control devices and detour routes will be set up appropriately to make sure our citizens know what's going on. The information was also shared, I think, via a press release and posted on all of our citizens' communication tools. The CDBG, post-secondary educational and vocational scholarship applications deadline has been extended to 5:00 PM on Wednesday, July 31st. Applications are available on the city's website and in person at our inspections and permitting office. For more details, we ask that you contact our program coordinator, Shalisa Dixon, and her number is 281-403-8628. Lastly, we have a large amount of activities and upcoming events going on in our great city. 2019, we ask everyone to please mark their calendar. The 2019 summer camp runs from now until Friday, August 2nd, at the community center. We ask that you visit our website at 281-403-8637 if you would like to be a part of the summer camp the last couple of weeks. Our senior breakfast bingo is on Thursday, July 18th, at 9:00 AM at the Recreation and Tennis Center. Our teen pickleball is on Monday, July 22nd, at 1:00 PM at the Recreation and Tennis Center. Our youth town hall, which we have some great stuff in store, and we hope that folks can come out and be a part of it, will be on Tuesday, July 23rd, at 6:00 PM at our community center. Our finance department and other team members throughout the city have really worked to make sure that this is an interactive experience for our youth of our community. Our fire station four open house is at 10:00 AM at Station Four. Parking available at the south locks of the HEB. We will have a book talk on Tuesday, July 30th, at 10:00 AM at our tennis and recreation and tennis center. We have a clergy roundtable that's coming up in the first part of August at our city center. Our car seat safety check will be on Thursday, August 1st, at 9:00 AM at the Target parking lot, which is on Highway 6. And then our community operation back-to-school health fair will be on Saturday, August 4th, at the Fort Bend County Annex and Access Health parking lot at 307 Texas Parkway. I would encourage our citizens to please visit our website. Large amount of our updates and upcoming events are there, and we look forward to your partnership. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll have the police department annual report. Chief Ferris.
All righty, Mayor and council, thank you so much for having me. It's always an honor to come back every year and tell you about your police department. They keep impressing me, and I know they're impressive to the citizens. I hear from the citizens all the time, and our goal is to keep impressing you all. So just to give you a few highlights, some of you, by attending the district meetings, have heard a lot of this, so I'm not going to give you a whole lot more information than which you've gotten at the district meetings that we've had, but I will tell you that near the end, if I go quickly enough, that we're going to have you all the ability to handle drones that are coming on that we have. So a couple of things that your police department's done that the rest of the state hasn't is we're still one of the top agencies when it comes to accreditation. We're a three-time award winner. There's only about 25 agencies in the state of Texas of the thousands that are eligible for this award, only about 25 have this designation. Our crime clearance rate is 28%. The state, as you can see, averages 17%. That's pretty significant. That goes to the hard work of the investigators and the public in helping us with solving a lot of these crimes. All the things that you'll see that the police department's accomplished, we cannot do with our strongest weapon, and that's our collaboration and cooperation from our general public, because without the support of you all and the public, none of this is possible. So we like to take pride in what the police department is able to accomplish, but we can't do it without your support and the support of the public. Again, you know, we're in the top safest cities ranked in the state of Texas, and they actually put the numbers in there so they kind of quantify and give a little weight to some of those ratings, so it's nice to be rated by some of the top companies in the nation when it comes to security, and that Home Security Advisor's certainly one of them, and also alarms.org is another one. As you know, code enforcement is under our guise in the police department, and we've conducted over 8,000 code enforcement inspections this year, and I'll give you a better breakdown here shortly. We currently still keep our open data initiative by putting raw data available to the public to inspect anytime they want via our website that communications maintains, and we've just recently updated it. So the drones are coming up now, and that's mainly for you all to handle and look at while I talk, because I'm a lot more, or a lot less fun than you all handling the drones. Those things are about five pounds when they're at 75 feet. You all can handle them, they're yours.
Wow.
At about 75 feet is what they normally fly. We have a ceiling of 400 feet. We have nine pilots, they have to pass FAA, that's in order to do it. We'll pass it out to you all out here, too, in a little bit. But those are your pieces of property. We're the agency that has set the bar high, which in the area, where a lot of agents are spending money on aircraft and the high cost of fuel, we're not. And the people that paid for those are drug dealers. We use seizure money to pay for those. No taxpayer money is paid for those. I'm going to keep going on. To give you a little bit about our code enforcement, we handled right at 8,200 initial inspections, and I'll direct your attention down to the bottom. That's actually total C Click Fix entries, where they've entered into C Click Fix from the community reporting things, and you'll see by district where C Click Fix reporting is taking place. And as you can see, that's about 40, almost 4,800 C Click Fix entries. Probably should have did the drones afterwards, that may have been, that's like bringing candy to a kindergarten class, I think. Yeah. I'll change that up next year. I'm looking at the smiles on some of your faces going, "Yeah, that was probably out of order there."
Nice distraction.
We'll make it happen. To give you an idea, by district, what code violations we deal with, they all pretty much mirror themselves until you get down to like the fourth one, and then we have a little bit of a break-off of weather protection and exterior type issues when it comes to A and B, and then the trees are a challenge for us in C and D. And then A and B, the fencing, and all this is, is the fact that our community's aging and just trying to keep up with the stuff, but the dilapidated fencing and then the garbage done in C and D. And that doesn't mean that there's trash blowing all about, it just means people didn't properly deal with it and put it out where they need to put it out. To give you an idea of calls for service, we average about 295 initial police calls of service per day. That doesn't cover follow-ups done by our criminal investigation division. So when citizens or you all ask me, "Hey, what happened at, you know, Fifth and Main" or whatever, I may not know, because we run 295 calls per day. I can make a phone call to dispatch and find out really quick, but just about any one of our citizens can still do that, as well as you all, the same as me, they'll answer you just the same unless it's a crime in progress or it's an open investigation. But remember, we also have tracking crime on our website that any citizens or you all can look at at any time, day or night. So again, that's an easy button to follow on the website without having to call the police chief or one of you all to try to figure out what's going on. You can direct them to raids online or tracking crime, it's the same thing, on the city's website. Oftentimes, they ask, "How do you go about accomplishing crime reduction or crash reduction?" We use a system called D-DAX, Data Driven Approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety. What that really means in layman's terms is a lot of high-visibility traffic enforcement. We don't even mind stopping, you know, like city management or anything. Sometimes it just happens. So, "Where'd he go?" "Oh, he walked out." So that might have happened to somebody here recently, and he's not on the dais.
Oh, I thought you were talking about me.
I don't know about you. I'm going to have to find out about that story. Did you really get stopped?
I did.
Oh, that's funny. Well, they didn't tell me.
But it wasn't for speeding.
I don't want to know. I don't want, no confession.
It wasn't for texting, it was because I didn't have a signal on.
Well, we stopped for a whole lot of things, but only about 40% of the time do we write traffic citations, and it goes back to that D-DAX. And D-DAX, again, is where we've determined that the majority of our community is mobile, they don't, we don't have a whole lot of pedestrian traffic, and the people that come into our city to do no good oftentimes are mobile. So if they see us making traffic stops, they're less apt to come into our city. But like I said, only 40% of the time-ish do we actually write a summons to appear in court. So safe to say you didn't get a ticket for, it must have been minor infraction, because I would have heard of that. So they could have mentioned that to me before I got here, that would have been nice. Anyway, that's two things that I need to cover. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Woo wee! D-DAX has been quite successful. You can see, the first year of implementation, we had about 56,000 contacts. In 2017, 2018, we had right at 85,000. So I guess we can add one more, 1819. We're not going to say who, that, well, I know one, he's not sitting up here now, but I really didn't know about the mayor. That's funny.
Pass the drones out around so you can distract.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep my composure here, because that was a good one. Property crime, a year-to-year change, you can see, and property crime is the most pervasive type of crimes that we see in Missouri City. Thank goodness we don't have person crimes as much, although we did have an uptick in those type crimes. I'll cover that here shortly. But from 1718, you can see that we had a 25% drop in burglaries, and I hate to touch percentages, because we have such a low crime rate, the numbers are actually more telling, and I'm going to give you, for you statisticians in the audience, and I know, so far, I know his background, so I know he's analyzing, and I've known him for years, so he's quite an educated man, he's working this in his head right now. But larceny, which is a federal term for theft, is down 13%. Motor vehicle theft, or if you watch a lot of movies, it's grand theft auto, which that's only in California, but it's down 37%. But overall, our Part I property crimes are down 16%. But, you know, a year-to-year comparison really doesn't give you a true picture, but a five-year comparison certainly does, and that's how we determine our resource numbers on a five-year comparison. And you'll notice in our five-year comparison for property crimes, 2018 for burglary, it's lower than our lowest number we've had in five years. Same with larceny, or like I said, that's means theft, and then auto theft, I mean, we're significantly lower than auto theft. So a lot of that, I'd love to say it's the police department's doing, but you know, our first approach isn't enforcement when it comes to addressing crime issues. Our first job is education and prevention, and if we educate our citizens and don't hide the fact that we're having issues, that's where, when a police department starts hiding the fact that you're having issues in a neighborhood, is when you start having bigger issues in the neighborhood. Keep your citizens informed and say, "Look, we're having car break-ins." They themselves will start tightening up the fort, if you will, and, you know, locking their doors at night, not letting anybody get in their cars, not that anybody on here's done that before either. I'm really throwing stones tonight. Ooh, it's getting sweaty in here. For you all that like bar graphs, that's for you bar graph folks on the very last slide, it pretty much covers what I covered on the other ones. Crimes against persons, that's the violent crimes. Again, we don't see it very often, but as you know, MS-13 is in and around the entire nation, we're certainly not immune to them here. We do have one of our personnel assigned to a federal task force. In fact, we're the only agency in Fort Bend County that has someone assigned to the federal task force that deals with those types of gangs, and a lot of those are a result of the undocumented minor issues that we've had through the years, because almost every one of these guys got here that way. Our rape is, and that's the federal term, sexual assault is what we use here, is up 5%. As you see, when you deal with those percentages, it looks really terrible, because our murder rate, generally we have zero, we had five in 2018, and you all know that was the gang members attacking each other because they're rivals in clearly another country, but they found each other here and took care of their business here, unfortunately, in Missouri City, at least four of those five times. Robbery's down 37%. Again, I hate those percentages, we need to be dealing with numbers, but we need to be dealing with numbers, but we still have low crime numbers. When you're talking about a city that runs 295 police actions today, a day, having only 27 robbery calls in a year is nice. But, I'll tell you what, if I'm the robbery victim, it's a crime wave. But, 27 is actually pretty low. So, we really got really, really low crime in our city. And again, it's cooperation with the citizens and the Police Department working together. Aggravated assaults, that's where someone's used some type of weapon or caused serious bodily injury during a regular assault is down 39%. But, overall, our violent crime, Part I violent crime, is also down 29%. But, again, one-to-one doesn't really tell you anything. For you guys that are analyzing this, you can see the five-year comparison, and you can see that everything relatively stayed flat. Of course, our low for murder is normally zero, and that's actually our normal, not a five-year normal. That is, our lifetime normal is normally zero in murder. Robbery is trending down tremendously, but everything else relatively stayed flat when you compare it to the five-year average. And then, there's that bar chart for you all, I mean, the, you know, the charts that you all, some like the bar charts. The Open Data Initiative, I want to really rehash this again. I mentioned it earlier. But, these are the things that are on the website, and it's easy to find on the city's website under the police page. I don't know of any other Police Department in the area that puts that out there, raw data form. And I want to make sure that the citizens understand it is raw data, so they can twist it however they want. You all know that the racial profiling data is raw data, but we send it off to the Institute, University of North Texas for analysis every year. I think it's March 1st is when it has to be presented to you all, so you all get that copy. But, it's also available for citizen review, anytime, day or night, from the comfort of their own home. Community engagement stays strong, and a few pictures are depicted here, but I'm not going to touch each one of them. This is where, if you all have any questions, if you all have any questions for me, that would certainly be welcomed. Or suggestions for improvement.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to say, first of all, you guys are doing an amazing job, and I want to thank you all for your community presence. I think that one thing that we always need to do is remind the citizens that we are an extremely safe city. There's no perfect city that's absent of any crimes. But, I really want to stop the narratives that are out there, that certain areas of town are unsafe or less safer than others, because that's just completely not true. Texas Parkway is not dangerous compared to Highway 6. Matter of fact-
It's one of the safest shopping corridors in the entire region, Texas Parkway is.
Right. And so, while we want to always continue to improve our safety issues, I just want the citizens to know that we just don't have that type of issue on Texas Parkway, the Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor, and that, you know, we're a safe city. We're a safe area, and I just want that to be stated and known. And I also want to commend you all on working on the incident that happened in Buffalo Run Park back in December, and that you guys have apprehended, I want to say, four suspects since-
The most recent, I don't want to give credit to the name of the gang again, but the most recent gang south of our border and south of our southern neighbor's border, the gang that originally started there, yes, we just solved it actually last Thursday. We have a member of the National Police Department of that country, been in town all week. He'll be speaking at our Police Department Wednesday. I don't want to mention his name, because believe it or not, in his country, he's got a price on his head. But, yeah, so, yeah.
Well, I bring that up, because a lot of things that are attributed to Missouri City as far as crime and things of that nature are really not Missouri City incident. These are people from outside of Missouri City, Houstonians or other people, and some of these things happen in Houston, but because of the postal addresses, they say it happened in Missouri City. So, I just wanted to be known out there, Missouri City is a safe city, and I want the residents to feel good about that.
Yeah. Easy clue is when you see it on the news, and they're saying live from Missouri City, and you see the Houston Police Department in the background, not Missouri City. We handle all of our own investigations.
Chief, thank you for the presentation. What are some of the small things that residents can do to make sure that they remain safe, that they can do what they can to help minimize, you know, crime happening in their own neighborhood?
Yeah. One of the most pervasive crimes we have is vehicle burglaries in the overnight period. If they take all that stuff that they're storing in the garage, you know, that $300 of stuff, and put it in like a storage facility, because all these storage facilities would love to have their business, and take that $40,000 to $50,000 automobile and put it in that garage, and put the $300 worth of stuff they just got to have in a storage facility, that would take away the opportunity for people to enter their cars. And most of our vehicle break-ins are in unlocked cars. So, if you just simply lock the door and take your valuables out of your car, that would really help us a whole lot, is because, like I said, vehicle break-ins, also known as burglary of motor vehicles, that's clearly one of the most pervasive crimes we have.
And can you remind the citizens that are viewing this evening that we have programs in place, right, that help citizens keep an eye on their property if they go out of town for the weekend? Can you speak to that briefly?
You bet. We have the Vacation Watch Program. They can go online and sign up for it, and after they've come back from vacation, they get a printout, actually a mail-out from the Police Department. It's actually on my letterhead, and it tells us how many times we've checked their property and anything we found out of place. But, if we do find something out of place while they're out of town, if it's something, you know, relatively unsafe or egregious, we call the registered key holder and get it remedied right away. But, that's clearly one of the things we can do. They can also contact any one of our community outreach officers. Sergeant Dench actually heads that unit, and they can get a crime prevention check, and we also do that for commercial businesses.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Quick, Stacy, can you guys work together to put out a piece for the summertime in reference to, you know, when people leave away from home, that you guys have that service, as well as locking, reminding residents to lock their doors? My neighbor actually had his car broken into, but he said, oh, I didn't lock the door, but I left a computer, a laptop, in my car. So, just, you know, kind of friendly reminder. It's the summertime, and I know kids get a little bored and whatever else. So, I mean, just putting that reminder out there to remind them, hey, you know, lock your doors, you know, just kind of some crime tips, or safety tips, rather, for them for the summertime. And, you know, every now and then, if we can remind them, you know, not, I mean, but I'm absolutely supportive. I mean, I park in the garage. I get upset if I can't get in the garage. So, but yeah, if we could put out, just out a small piece or something, just to remind the residents, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get Stacy and work on that.
There was a program that you had, I don't know, a couple of years ago, when our officers went to HOA meetings, on the way out, they'd check the car doors.
The report cards.
Is parked there.
Yeah, we put the report cards.
And put a caution sticker on there. So, it's one way of making sure that people understand.
Yeah, we still do that, actually. We do the report card. Yeah, they get a failing grade, if you, obviously their laptops in plain view and the other doors unlocked.
I understand that.
And Chief, if you may, one of the problems I'm having in my subdivision is, I tell them all the time the importance of turning their porch light on. Can you just-
Yeah, we'll cover, yeah, we'll have a series of safety tips. I mean, that's right down Sergeant Dench and Officer Ellis Williams Avenue. That's what they do. In fact, Officer Williams is one of the few crime prevention specialists in the entire region, so.
But it does serve as a deterrent, having that porch light on.
Yeah. Just remember, if any resident sees something, say something. If it seems out of place to you, because that's what the officers are paid to do. On that call for service thing, it showed other, and that was the largest number, that's proactive policing. That means your Police Department isn't afraid to be proactive and meet contact with the citizens. I can't say that about some Police Departments, because they're too afraid what the community perception is going to be if they're looking into the uncommon and unusual. And our Police Department doesn't experience that because of its great relationship with the community.
Chief, the coffee with the cops got a lot of good praise, and then also the babysit, the baby share. Yeah, y'all did a great job. I heard several residents compliment on that, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass it on.
And feel free to remind them, just because they live next door to the neighbor, doesn't mean someone won't break into their car. I mean, that was the comment. He was like, I live next door to the mayor. I'm like, okay. How did that work out for you?
Yeah. See, somebody showed back up, you know, not gonna mention the lady stopped on traffic. Hey.
I have a quick question.
I figured you wouldn't miss that opportunity.
I have a quick question. Do you have an update on the mini station, the sign that would be on the side of the Wells Fargo, so we can let the residents know that we do have a mini station inside of the Wells Fargo building?
We don't have our contract yet.
Okay.
Back from the other folks. So, as long as that comes back and that we can move forward, we haven't gotten it back from the attorneys on the Gillette Management Company. We expect it tomorrow. As long as we get that back, then we'll be able to move forward. But, we're going to get signage, just like, what was it, Ron Reynolds has signage up there saying, we're going to make a request through Text dot. Shashi's actually working that for us through his contacts at Text dot. And then, as far as signage out front, no, there's no signage out front, other than the Wells Fargo thing on the building. But, we're going to promote this loud and long.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to, I was sharing with Chief earlier, I want to thank the Police Department, and we've sent a couple of updates of some recent crime fighting efforts that they've put forth. But, we continue to be recognized, not only statewide, but nationally, for the work that our Police Department has done. And from the standpoint of the reduction in crime, record highs over the last five years, we continue to, even with challenges that are brought before us, we continue to make a difference and be considered a safe city in this state. So, hats off, Chief, to you and your team for the work that you guys are doing, and we truly look forward to finishing it off the year very strong.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, all opposed, motion passes. 7A, we do not have any zoning hearings or ordinances. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, all opposed, motion passes. 7A, we do not have any zoning hearings or ordinances. 7B, public hearings and related actions. Is public hearing to receive comments for and against proposed program, year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to have a public meeting in regards to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. As you know, Missouri City is an entitlement city, so we receive funds from Housing, Urban and Development to facilitate our CDBG program. Some of those national objectives are to benefit low to moderate income individuals, prevent and eliminate slums and blight, and also meet an urgent need in the community. Some of those eligible activities include construction of public facilities, infrastructure, code enforcement, economic development. Some of the agencies that can apply are nonprofit. The city can also benefit from it, as well as HOAs. And eligible uses of CDBG funds would include acquisition or construction of buildings, political activities, and things for governmental uses or government benefit. In CDBG, we have six target areas that extend from Fawn Meadow all the way down to the Lexington and Murphy area. The map has not changed over the last two years or so, or two or two to three years. However, it could change with the Census tract update, or the census coming out in 2020. For 2019, our allocation through HUD was $284,700. The unexpendited carryover funds from program years 17 and 18, which specifically is for housing rehab, is about $273,000. Some of the agencies and the programs that we've been able to assist in the past, and we intend to assist or continue to assist in the future, is code enforcement, child advocates, scholarships, Edison Arts, Fort Bend Meals on Wheels. In July 8th, or on July 8th, the committee, the CDAC Committee met and made a decision on how they wanted to spend that $284,000. And for public service activities, they wanted to spend it, give Meals on Wheels, 10,500. Child advocates, 10,500. Edison Arts, 10,500. And allocate 11,200 for scholarships. HUD requires us to have a 15% cap on public service activities. Many of these agencies, we provided assistance to them before, so the committee felt comfortable with what they provided for the community and continued to, and agreed to continue to provide fund stem. Some of the non-public service activities that were approved by the committee include code enforcement and the amount of $51,537, housing rehab, and the amount of $95,518, and non-public service activities in amount of $38,000. That includes First Time Home Buyers Program that's new to CDBG. That also includes a residential paint project that the committee agreed to have, and administration in the amount of $56,940. Also with that, HUD requires a 20% cap. Ever since our allocation came out and we began working on the Annual Action Plan, we had a survey that we've been sending out to the committee. Communications has worked with us to put it out in all our different methods. We went to meetings. We had an informational meeting for the residents and agencies who are interested in receiving services or finding out information, and we passed out the surveys there. We also have the survey in electronic form, so we've been able to email it, send it via text message. We have it posted at the library. We've passed it on to HCC. So, we're getting a lot of feedback from residents and citizens in the city. This is just a snapshot of what we've provided, or what's been provided to us. As you see, about 61% of those who've completed the survey are interested in, or focused in on sidewalks and streets. About 55% are looking for economic development, about 50% want programs for the elderly, and about 48% want to continue the housing rehab program. The CDAC Committee uses this information to decide how they want to spend that money, as far as the Annual Action Plan and the Consolidated Plan. I just want to provide some information on the Consolidated Plan in an effort to be efficient and to be considerate of council's time. The 2019-2023 Consolidated Plan continuing activities include code enforcement, sidewalk improvements, park improvements, public service agencies, that's like child advocates, Meals on Wheels, and housing rehab. Some of the new programs that we're looking at implementing is the Neighborhood Cleanup Program. Code Enforcement did a lot of work over in the Fifth Street area, and unfortunately, because this wasn't included in our prior year's Consolidated Plan, we weren't able to allocate any funds to assist in that. However, there's been a great success with working with some of our businesses, Home Depot and things like that, to assist with cleanup, abate a lot of those code enforcement issues. So, there's been a lot of success in that area. Lead-based paint abatement, that's a new program or new project that we're considering in the Consolidated Plan, submitting grants to help assess and enhance our opportunities or availability to use our funds to test some of those properties. HUD requires us to do a lead-based paint inspection for any house that we do housing rehab on. And if that house comes back and it's positive for lead-based, then there are some things that kind of takes them off the program. We have to move forward. And there's some abatement process that they have to go through. However, the program is not allocated or is not allotted to assist in that. First Time Home Buyers Program is something that the committee is really excited about. We're really excited to be able to present that to residents. We met with some other communities. We met with the city of Baytown to discuss how they've been able to implement their First Time Home Buyers Program, and the committee approved about $27,000 to go to that. We're thinking that we'll be able to assist anywhere from three to four residents with down payment assistance. We're still working on the specifics as far as eligibility. However, there's a certain amount that they'll be approved for, up to maybe $180,000, and then the program would assist with 5% of down payment and closing costs. The Residential Paint Project is also a new activity or goal that will assist code enforcement. I think the chief pointed out, in District A, there were some concerns as far as paint and weather stripping and things like that. So, the Residential Paint Project will allow us to assist residents in having exterior paint and curb appeal improvements to their property. That'll be separate from housing rehab. There's a lot of times where residents don't necessarily need interior work done, but they want assistance with curb appeal, and I think that that project would really be able to facilitate those needs. The Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program is something that the city has always been a- The Section 108 loan guarantee program is something that the city has always been allotted. However, it wasn't included in our consolidated plan, so we weren't able to take full advantage of those funds. Since we get about 284,000 annually for housing rehab, I'm sorry, for CDBG, HUD allows us to get five times that amount in Section 108 money. That's about 1.4 million. That money can be used towards acquisition, facade improvements. There's a lot of things that we want to do on Texas Parkway and Fifth Street, and that program would allow us to really do some good things over there. The TDHCA is the Texas Department of Home and Community Affairs. There's a home program that we're looking into applying for. That home program would allow us to do additional housing rehab. It would allow us to do home buyer assistance, single family development, and enhance our staff. So again, we met with some other cities and spoke with them, and we're seeing how they were able to get, maximize their resources, get additional monies. And so the program is looking into applying for those home monies through the state. A few things to keep in mind, August 5th is our second public hearing. August 16th is the deadline. That's when we'll be submitting the annual action plan and the consolidated plan to HUD. Public comments will be received. There'll be a 30-day period, and that second public hearing would take place again August 5th. Those comments will be submitted to HUD on August 16th as well. The citizen patient plan, which is a requirement to apply for those funds, it's a requirement as an entitlement city, will be submitted. The analysis of impediments fair housing study that was completed earlier this year will be enclosed in that. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Before there is any questions, this is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing. Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Okay. Any questions? I actually have as a citizen. Do we consider micro loans for small businesses? Is that something we can consider?
That's something, we're still in the drafting process of the consolidated plan.
Okay.
So that's something we can look into and present to the committee. We have a meeting taking place in a couple of weeks. It's important that whatever opportunities we want to look at or want to implement, that we include this in the consolidated plan. In the past, those opportunities have been missed because they weren't included. And so that's something we can look at and we can submit to the committee.
Okay. We did not have anyone who signed up for public comments. So does the council have any questions or concerns? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
A move to close the public hearing.
There a second?
There a second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have seven B to public hearing to receive comments for and against the proposed development block grant. Is there a motion to open the public hearing to receive comments for or against?
A move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We still do not have anyone who signed up. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
It was easy.
Public hearing to receive comments for and against the proposed program year 2017 annual action plan amendment.
Excellent. So we want to open up, in program year 16, there were several properties that were received emergency assistance. In those properties or with those properties, they extended or exceeded the allotment, the normal allotment. The CDAC approved approximately 91,000 for housing rehab. However, those emergency properties exceeded the 10,000 allotment up to 20,000. Therefore, those monies weren't allotted in that action plan. This is an opportunity for us to open up the public comments for residents to provide for or against input as far as amending that action plan so that we can cover those emergency repairs.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
A move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We don't have anyone who signed up. Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I just, Chalisa, I would like for you to just speak to the fact of why some of these emergency repairs and additional costs came about. I know some of it, if I'm not mistaken, had to do with the previous individuals who were handling some of our housing rehabilitation, caused some issues or maybe some, some things that were uncovered and discovered along the way, so.
In your packet, but I want to also provide this for council, is a description as far as what the homes that we've been able to assist. So traditionally, we like to spend around $10,000 or less for housing rehab. However, there were several properties that had extensive foundation damage, they had extensive roof damage, and those things needed to be taken care of. So if you, if you can visualize here, originally, there was 91,000 allocated for program year. However, there were about $53,000 that was paid currently. Those emergency repairs are those that exceed $10,000. That's 19,000, 20,000, 18,000, and another $20,000. So that exceeded what was originally allocated for that action plan for 2016. So we have to take those monies from elsewhere. So this amendment is to move money from 2017 so that we can cover those emergency repairs for 2016.
And if I might add, the reason behind these repairs had to do with what we're finding in some of the areas, we're finding major foundation problems with some of the homes. So this program was not meant to handle those repairs that go beyond the 20,000 threshold. So most of those properties, they experienced foundation damage. So with this change in the action plan request, it's not moving money from a different activity. It's the same activity, but unfortunately, we're pulling it from a different program year.
Thank you.
I noticed that in the earlier agenda item, and I guess this is kind of, so the, why do we have funds left over from 17 and 18?
The unallocated or the carryover funds that we have is for housing rehab.
Okay.
Because of these extenuating circumstances with these properties, it slowed the program down. We also, at that time, only had one contractor. Now we have a second contractor, so we're able to move things forward and get things taken care of.
Okay. So in, and are we now getting our staff to come out and inspect when the projects are over with? I know that was a big discussion a couple of years, about a year or so ago, about making sure there was an inspection once all the work was done, because people were saying things were left undone. So are we now having one of the Missouri City staff to go inspect to make sure that was done properly and completed?
Yes. So currently, the process is we have an city inspector go out. I've been going out on those initial inspections so that I can have firsthand account and take pictures. I can also communicate with the resident and let them know what is and not, is not qualified or covered under the program. After that, we have our contractor, one of the two contractors go out, and they provide a proposal. Once all the work has been completed, we do have the city inspector go back out. There's a final inspection form that the general contractor, the city inspector have to sign and approve for, approve before we even pay those invoices or pay the contractor for the work.
Okay, okay. Are there any more comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
We have Councilmember Emery making the motion and Councilmember Rulis making the second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
There are no appointments. Nine A authorizations, consider authorizing acceptance of a special warranty D from Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 48 conveying Dry Creek Village Lift Station
Mayor and council, as part of our current utility agreement with MUD Number 48, when they build the lift station, they convey that to the city, and this is the process where they're conveying the lift station and the lift station site to the city after it's been completed.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the acceptance of the special warranty D from Fort Bend County?
A move to authorize.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Nine B, consider awarding a delinquent property tax collection services contract and authorizing the city manager to negotiate, execute a delinquent property tax collection services contract with the awardee. Elena, come on up.
Good evening, mayor and council. We will be reviewing the recommendation, the staff recommendation for award for the delinquent property tax collection services contract. We'll also provide some information about the process and some history background. The last solicitation was done in 2014. The agreement expired June 30th, 2019, but there is a clause within the agreement that gives the current vendor the ability to continue to collect for six months. And if you're aware of the property tax, delinquent property tax collection process, all of the delinquent accounts become delinquent February 1st, so we don't believe that there will be additional accounts to be turned over, although the contract expired June 30th. This current solicitation was issued on May 16th. As normal, it was posted on two websites, and it was also advertised in the Fort Bend Independent. We received responses from two vendors on June 14th, 2019. That was Linebarger and Purdue. The timeline, again, the RFP was issued May 16th. Questions from the proposers were due on May 29th. We received the proposals on June 14th. Last week, July 11th, we reviewed the recommendation with the Finance and Services Committee. Tonight, we are providing you with our recommendation, and upon approval, we will issue a notification of intent to award with the contract beginning in July 2019. There were five evaluation committee members that were selected. All of them signed a nondisclosure agreement. Yes?
Why does it have four up there?
It has four because there were five, and then prior to receiving the proposals, we received a resignation notice, so we had to replace that person. And so when I typed it, I put four, so that is just a mistake on my part. But there were five. The individual scoring was sent directly to purchasing from the committee members, and those scores were tabulated by purchasing with the results sent to the evaluation committee members, and the scores and process was presented to the Finance and Services Committee. This is the evaluation criteria that was used. The first was local tax collection experience, it was 25 points. Second was the capability of the firm, including their legal personnel, support personnel, and their data processing capabilities. It was 20 points. Third was the ability to handle complex delinquent tax litigation and comprehensive bankruptcy services, it was 15 points. Fourth was the clarity and quality of response and supporting data, that was 10. Fifth was the location of the firm's staff with respect to the geographic location of the city, five points. Six were the responses from references, it was 10 points. And seven was the taxpayer communication and assistance program. So a total of 100 points for each evaluator. And this here is the tabulation and ranking. We have Linebarger with 455 out of 500 points and Purdue with 445 out of 500 points. And we recommend the award be with Linebarger due to the highest score. That ends my presentation.
Open this up for discussion. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion. We open it for discussion.
A second.
There's a motion. So any questions, comments?
Hey, Elena, I have a question. Were there any goals established for Linebarger's last year with their contract or their last contract? Were there any goals established?
I am not quite sure about the goals. I know at the municipal court, when there were goals, but I can't speak to the goals in the property tax contract. I'd have to get that information and bring it back to you.
From my understanding there were goals, so I'm just trying to see if they upheld those goals.
On the tax, and I may be, we'll check, but I don't believe there were on tax collection on the fines and fees there were.
Correct.
We had, if you recall from that previous one.
No, from my understanding, it was on the property taxes, so if we can confirm that. Do you know anything about that, Anthony?
I don't, Madam, Ms. Edwards, but I can tell you within the next minute after the question whether or not definitively, whether or not there are contracts.
Elena, Kim, if you don't mind, can we go into the changes?
Okay. Initially, the scoring changed. Okay, initially, the scores were tabulated using the totals that were presented by the committee members, and during the finance committee, Mayor Proton Preston requested that we provide the scoring by criteria. And when that information was compiled into the spreadsheet, we noticed that there was one error in the scoring, and that was a result of a manual calculation. Normally, our scores come over electronically in Excel, and we had one member that printed and manually wrote in, and the total was incorrect, so we caught that in Excel. So the recommendation remains the same, but the points for Linebarger decreased by 10. So previously, we had 465, and that was what was presented to the finance committee, but now we have 455 for Linebarger.
And secondly, I know on the informational sheet that we were provided with, it had evaluator number three.
It's evaluator four.
Okay, is it just a typo?
Yes.
Okay.
I have evaluator number four. When you're looking at the numbers, they're so different from the rest of the evaluators. The rest of the evaluators was kind of falling in the same ballpark, but number four is like considerably low, so is there a reason?
We had representation from various departments. We had finance, city manager, and we also had legal. They provide a different perspectives. They look for different things. And so that's just the perspective that that evaluator brought to the process.
Yeah, they're like 20 points different from everybody else. It's like huge, so just, you know, it stood, it stood out. One of the things also with them being so close in, I guess, in points, did we ever consider allowing both of them to be our, our tax collection vendors?
To have two vendors providing the same service? I don't know if that has ever been done. I'm not, I think that there might be.
There are cities who do it.
Do you know and how they bifurcate the accounts?
I don't know like specific logistics, but the city of Houston does it. They have to. I mean, so there are cities that do it, so I didn't know if that was something that we considered.
We did not, mayor, we did not consider that. That wasn't based on the practices of our city. This RFP was issued based on the current process that was in place, and we proceeded accordingly. In this case, sometimes I think some cities prefer one because there's one level of accountability to that one vendor. Some people prefer to have two if they have those two, and it's pretty much based upon each city. But in this case, we opted to go with what the precedent has been in our community.
How, how, do you remember from the last time how close the point value was?
My recollection was less than five.
Okay, so we're still kind of in the same, I guess, ballpark.
Yes. And mayor, going back to your initial conversation related to the evaluator number four, every individual evaluates differently. Some people are more gracious and liberal in their scoring. Some people are very tough, and I think at this point, what we always try to look at is, is there consistency across the board, whether or not there's a huge outlier, and not from the overall scoring, but differentiation between the proposals. And I think in this case, with four, there's a difference of scoring of four, 74 to 70. If you look at the difference with everybody else, that's consistent. Three, I think the biggest difference is, let me see, seven points. So the spread is consistent, it's just the issue of the evaluator, how they evaluate, just like a performance. It's just an issue of the evaluator, how they evaluate, just like a performance evaluation. Some people are a little more liberal versus conservative.
Yeah, are we able to, is Bill pulling the goals?
Yes, ma'am. He said he's pretty definitive it wasn't, but he's going to pull it now.
Okay, yeah, if we could, because that's important to see if they met their goals. Because I know, if I remember correctly, if it was the right discussion, that the tax, they did have goals to meet. Is any, are the vendors, is the vendor here, our current vendor here?
Yes, they are.
Are they aware, were there any goals that were set?
Not aware that there was goals.
Okay, for the tax, it wasn't? Okay.
I think it was the other one, but we're double checking to make sure.
Okay, okay, okay.
Do we want to?
Well, does anybody have any more questions?
I do.
Okay.
In the meantime, what can we do to ensure that we don't run into these type of issues? Again, whether it's with the typo or the scoring mechanism. I know someone filled out their sheet manually. What are we going to do moving forward?
So what we're doing moving forward is we're going to ensure that we're calculating or we're running the tabulation by criteria so that we're checking all of the totals that are coming to us. We did actually go back to all of the RFP and RFQs that are evaluated in the same manner, and we checked all of them, running that same model, to ensure that all of the scoring was correct, and it was, this wasn't an anomaly. Normally, they come over in spreadsheets.
Thank you.
And I was just going to say, you know, Missouri City, although we're a somewhat sizable city, we're still Missouri City compared to Houston. Houston's the fourth, it's going on third largest city in the United States, so one of their districts is bigger than our entire city. And so, you know, I don't know, I guess that would probably be why they would have multiple vendors to work with on a variety of matters. But I don't know the complications centered around how that would work if you could do multiple vendors, but on that or other-
I don't think there's complications.
At this point, I'll leave it as I stated to the elected body. At this point, staff's recommendation is to proceed with the one unless there's a direction of consideration of the two. We just didn't do that as part of this process that we've gone through. What I would say is that, to address Mayor Protem's comment, this was an anomaly, and I think in this case, when you look at each evaluator's, it's provided an Excel spreadsheet to automatically tabulate those. In this instance, one of the evaluators manually inputted the number, inputted the numbers. But based on the mechanisms that our team has put in place and looking at our past practice, this is a blip, and we expect that going forward, there shouldn't be any issues like that in the future.
Elena, moving forward, if we haven't, if there were not any goals established, can we establish some goals and make sure that we do have some accountability level?
We have an answer for you, and then we'll answer that question, Councilman.
Edwards, I apologize. You were correct. I had forgotten this. Back in 2014, we had written in, and I think this is the first time we had done that, was that there were, over the next five years, beginning June 30th, 2015, there would be the firm's projected delinquent tax collection percentage levy only for each tax year under the term of this agreement, starting with tax year 2013. By June 30, 2015, would be 75%. And then each year progressed up to June 30th, 2019, being 94%. So there are incremental increases from 75% to 83%, 88%, 92%, and 94%. So anyway, I'm making copies for everyone.
And then the question is, have they met the goals?
That's my question.
I don't have the information with me on the collection rates for the city of Missouri City. So that is something that I can go back and take a look at, unless they have that information and would like to present. Okay.
Okay. Is that something we can get? I mean, that's important, because I remember you weren't here last year, or the last time we did the contract, and it was, I mean, that was one of the important things that we put in there, that them to meet the goals. So I think that's very important that, you know, we find out that information.
Right. We can take a look at that and work with them to get the information.
So with that being said, we have an item. Are we saying, are they going to get that information? Are we?
After the meeting, sometime this week, we can meet to get that information. I know it's not available at this moment. I don't have it.
So my question directly is, do they want to hold off on having this be considered this evening? There seems to be some information that is being, going to be gathered, or there is something on the table to be voted on, but people want that information.
Or is it possible to get that information by the close of this, this meeting so that we could consider it and postpone it until later?
Question?
Yeah.
It is quite possible. I'm sitting here thinking, okay, I have reports that are in our file that I can look to see what our delinquent tax role was at a certain point in time to look at the percentages. As far as the previous fiscal years, we can go down and run the calculations.
Well, we have quite a few more agenda items, so I mean-
And I know, I think I'm presenting quite a few of them, so I can work with staff to get that done this evening.
Mayor and Council, we will have the team to go down and see if we can do it, if we feel like it's something. I think in this case, there wasn't something that, based on previous conversation I had, that there was an issue of a problem. But we can give the actual numbers and see what the performance has been and provide that to you.
Well, aside from that, the city manager's notes, even if that information is gathered this evening, I would like some time to look over that information, even if it's presented this evening. Right? I don't know if that is reasonable amount of time to look at it and process it and see if goals have been met and to really do the due diligence. So I'm just throwing that out there. That's my opinion.
Sure.
If I could interrupt, I think the motion on the table was actually just a motion to discuss the issue. So we actually don't have a motion to authorize the contract. If you all want to put the item at the end of the agenda, you all can vote. You need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place that item at the end in the order of business, or, you know, somebody can make a motion to postpone the item as well if that's the will of the council.
Somebody want to make a motion on how you want to proceed?
I make a motion.
Sounded like-
Chris, are you making a motion?
I was going to move it to the end of the meeting, and if we have time, great. If not, we have to make another decision.
Yeah, then we'll have to make another, another motion.
Right.
I'll second that. He moved to suspend the rules to move it to the end of the agenda, and I second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules to move it to the end of the meeting and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Elena, you're going to be busy. Alrighty, we are nine C. Consider authorizing the abandonment of a 2.7 acre easement for the Missouri City Management District Number Two.
Mayor and Council, we're asking for the abandonment of a drainage easement. The subject easement is located in the Business Park. Just to give you a little vicinity, it's on the east side of Fort Bend Tollway. Specifically, this tract, the 2.7 acre tract is located east of Hurricane Lane. As you know, that area is up for development, and there's a lot of planting activities going on. The developer of the property has dedicated other drainage easements through the planting process. This is a 2.7 acre tract, which is not useful for drainage purposes in the middle of the tract, and they're just proposing to abandon this tract.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we're open up for discussion. Any comments or questions?
Does the motion authorize the abandonment?
Yes.
A motion, I apologize. Motion authorize the abandonment.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We are nine D. Consider authorizing a 10-year write-off for delinquent taxes on personal property and a 20-year write-off for delinquent taxes on real property in a total amount of $13,443.05 in accordance with the Texas Property Tax Code, Section 33.05, Limitation on Collection of Taxes. Who's presenting?
Mayor and Council, I guess I'm, I'm the one left. So on June 27th, the city did receive communication from Fort Bend County, tax collector requesting city approve the 10 to 20-year write-off of property taxes and per the code. And the, it states that if there is no pending litigation concerning the delinquent property at the time of the cancellation and removal, the collector of a taxing shall cancel and remove from the delinquent tax rule. One, a tax on real property that has been delinquent for more than 20 years, or two, a tax on personal property that has been delinquent for more than 10. Total amount of write-off that is before you is $13,443.05, including the following tax years and the amounts per those years and the number of accounts it takes into account, which is 98 cents, 98 accounts over the years from 1998 to 2008, again, totaling $13,443.05. And we recommend approval.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second so we can open up for discussion?
I'll make the motion.
I second that motion.
And it is a motion to authorize. Is there any questions or comments, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Nine E, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the provision of all services related to removal and hauling of bio-solid sludge from the city's wastewater and surface water treatment plants.
Mayor and Council, this is a sludge hauling contract. We advertised, and there was a bidder, and this is the incumbent bidder. The staff recommends authorizing this contract with the-
Is there a motion and a second?
Motion to-
Authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Emery and one, somebody, Councilmember Boni? Boni? Boni has a second. Okay, is there any discussion? So I remember not too long ago, there was another sludge contract. What's going on with that?
I think it was-
That was this, and we recommended continuation of existing, and in order to go back out for bid, went out back out for bid. It's the same company.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Bill has a good memory than me.
And I just remember like tidbits and stuff, so.
I'm glad you remember, that's correct. Yes, we had expired the contract, and we just authorized for interim period. Now we're coming back to award the bid. That's correct.
Okay, okay. So all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Nine F, consider authorizing an interlocal agreement with the Fort Bend County, providing for the funding of bathroom renovations in Missouri City Fire Station Number One. Chief, you're up.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. How's everybody doing?
Fine, yourself?
Great. As you remember, Mayor and Council, last year, we entered an agreement to add a EMS unit at Station One. While we were doing that assessment during our pilot last year, we looked at some of the conditions of the station, as well as what the adding the staff was going to do to the stations, and we looked at different concepts. I've been talking with Chief Temple over the last year or so to come up with those concepts. And from that, we came up with a series of dollar amounts to do some renovations. So from that, working with Commissioner DeMention in his office, DeMention in his office, we've come up with that agreement, which is before you tonight, and we look forward to your considering authorizing going forth with this agreement so we can improve the bathroom and living conditions for the Fort Bend EMS providers and your Missouri City firefighter.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the interlocal agreement with Fort Bend County.
Is there a second?
I second.
And we have, Ahmad is here. Would you like to make any comments or? Okay. Ahmad is actually Commissioner's Chief of Staff. So is there any comments or anything? Well, if there's no comments, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ahmad, and let the Commissioner know. We appreciate it.
Mr. Swad, thank you for your facilitation. I really appreciate it.
Don't use those restrooms.
Thank you so much.
Ten A, ordinances.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending the general budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, ending September 30th, 2019, transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
Good evening, again. I'll try to be brief with this one. In your packet, you had the Exhibit A, which outlined every account that was being updated, as well as the PowerPoint that was provided to the Finance and Services Committee. Last week on July 11th, we went through the amendment in much detail last week. But what I wanted to provide for you tonight is just an overview of those high-level items that are within the amendment. As you know, the budget amendments come to you quarterly. Budgets are estimates, and there are-
Bless you.
-times when unanticipated revenue or expenditures may occur, and we need to ensure that we operate in compliance with the approved budget. For the general fund, we have a revenue increase for sales tax. And that's just based on our annual projections. We wanted to increase the budget to account for the increase in revenue. We also have an increase in expense for vehicle replacements. It's a little over $200,000, and that is for some of the vehicles that were totaled. We also have a debt issue within the utility fund that was budgeted at $10.8 million, and we are not issuing that debt this year, so we're removing that from the budget. The other item, which accounts for a couple of pages of the Exhibit A, is a change in our accounting process for debt issues. Previously, we accounted for debt issues within the construction funds, and to ensure that we are able to easily report on our debt, we have to prepare a report annually to the state where we have to outline the amount of proceeds that are left. We also have to conduct arbitrage calculations. If we keep the bond proceeds in separate funds, we'll be able to do that a lot easier than how it has been done in the past. And in order to do that, we have to move the budget from the various capital project funds into the funds for the new debt. So we're doing this for the 2018 A debt issue and for the 2018 general obligation issue.
We have the, can we get a motion and a second?
I'm going to consider that ordinance.
And second?
Second.
Any concerns from the Finance Committee? I think that's Floyd, Rashandra, and Chris?
I did have a question. I know in the Finance Committee, we spoke about what vehicles were totaled the most, like what department. Did you ever get that information?
I know that staff requested that information from Fleet. As soon as we do have that information, we will forward it to you.
Okay, thank you. You said what vehicles were totaled?
Yeah.
Oh, totally wrecked. Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you, Floyd. I'm suffering over here.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Ten B?
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, establishing a maximum speed limit for a school zone on Knights Court for Elkins High School located within the city, including designating a location and times, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is simply an adjustment of the current ordinance through a routine inspection of the signage out at Elkins High School. Staff noticed that the school zone was a little narrow, so we moved it to be more in compliance with the MUTCD. So they shifted the signage 220 feet to the east, and we needed the ordinance to match the signage.
Is there a motion and a second?
Motion approve the ordinance.
So we have Councilmember Emery with the motion, or Councilmember Marulis with the second? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Eleven A?
A resolution of the City Council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending a fee schedule, repealing Resolution Number R1829, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and making certain findings relating thereto.
Go for it, Otis.
Mayor and Council, this is House Bill 852 in response to that. You've been presented a resolution that would modify our fee schedule as it relates to residential permit fees. This is a number of bills that have affected our processes as a city. What House Bill 852 did, it basically stated that cities may not, in interpreting or calculating building permit fees for residential structures, utilize valuation or construction costs for the- costs for those purposes. And it also said we may not request that information be disclosed in determining those permit costs. So as a result of that, we're asking the council to approve a temporary modification to the fee schedule. I will state that our building inspector has been in a collaboration with twelve other cities locally in terms of what they are doing to satisfy this particular bill. They've looked at averages on square footage costs in which cities are utilizing that formula. So in the meantime, what we're suggesting is that our fees on residential structures be set at a rate of fifty cents per square feet for a single family and then on the multi-family side, that per square footage would be sixty cents per square feet. As part of that, there's also the plan review portion of that fee, which is twenty cents per square feet. And then there are some items that will receive a flat rate, such as accessory structures, which are averaging at seventy-five dollars, minor repairs fifty dollars, major repairs to residential structures at seventy-five dollars, roof repairs at seventy-five, window installations, five or more windows at fifty dollars, five or less windows at twenty-five dollars. And then the average driveway approach would be one hundred dollars with solar panels being one hundred dollars, patio with roof at fifty dollars, detached accessory structures as stated, one hundred dollars, siding and facade changes at seventy-five dollars. These are just some minor fees at this time that are being proposed on the residential side. The commercial fees are not affected. I will say also, we met with Baytown. They're utilizing a methodology that takes into account the number of hours spent on permit reviews as well as inspection. We are currently under a third party consultant that's actually looking at all of the fees in which we're using that same methodology. So there will be another fee revision being brought before you once that study is complete. But in the meantime, this will cause us to be in compliance with that bill. Thank you.
Is there a motion and a second so we can open up for discussion?
Question two.
Do we have a motion by Councilmember Marulis? Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Boni Pearson?
Pearson.
Pearson, Councilmember Pearson. You said this is temporary?
Yes, this is our holding pattern that would make us legal. There are a lot of our pardoning cities are not in compliance and they're doing the same thing. So if you read the community impact, city by city is adopting new fee schedules.
Okay.
For how long?
Well, it went into immediate effect in May, so yes.
We're trying to, us and other cities are trying to catch up with the legislation.
Meantime, this will hold us for a month or two.
So just to be clear, this is mandatory because of state law.
We don't have a choice.
Any idea what that means in dollars that we're going to?
We're going to try to be as close to what we're charging now based on square footage rather than the value. And that's one of the things we're working through right now and working with legal as well.
Do we know how much this is going to decrease our fee collection yet?
No, I ran some numbers and compared, for example, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, the current permit is about fourteen hundred dollars. And running these numbers, it was in that same ballpark, so we shouldn't lose any Fiona revenues at this point in time.
It won't be that.
I'm sorry. Oh, I mentioned a house that cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's on the old method, but we don't use that application anymore, so I wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
We just were clarifying that it's not revenue. Fees are just the cost of doing business.
Okay, mhm, yes.
We're not allowed to raise revenue.
The cost to do services per the ordinances.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Eleven B.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest an economic development agreement by and between the City of Missouri City, Texas, reinvestment zone number one, Fort Bend County, Texas, and the Missouri City Development Authority pertaining to the development, construction and rehabilitation of the historic Missouri City Middle School Gymnasium Project.
Council and mayor, this is a resolution before you today to approve of an authorized development agreement between the TERS number one, the Missouri City Development Authority, and Fort Bend County for the rehab and redevelopment of the Missouri City Middle School Gymnasium Project, which was considered by the MCDAs earlier this evening.
Yes. And just as a reminder, can we get the county to come and give us a presentation of what they're going to do?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Move to adopt.
Yeah, get a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Boni and a second by Councilmember Pearson. All those in favor?
Well, can I? Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Relative to this project, I just wanted to be clear or at least you to kind of elaborate just for the public to know that Fort Bend County has been giving us TERS dollars year after year and has never asked for anything in return. And so this will be incrementally dispersed to Fort Bend County, our portion, over a period of time. Can you just speak to that?
Absolutely. Fort Bend County, over the term of the TERS, has been contributing one hundred percent of its increment to the TERS fund and has not asked for any reimbursement or has not asked for any projects to be considered by the TERS for reimbursement. This is the first project of its kind that Fort Bend County is asking for and the TERS One Board voted on July tenth unanimously to approve that project.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Let's vote again. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We have an item. Are we ready? We're going to go back to item nine B.
Mayor, thank you so very much. I was wondering, when I initially had some conversations about this agreement, about whether or not there is a performance standard in the agreement. When you look at the actual contract, it's not a goal or, nor is it a performance metric. Section two point zero four says that the firms projected delinquent tax collection percentages for each year under the term of this agreement, starting tax year two thousand thirteen, it was done in thirteen and actually consummated in fourteen, shall be. So what it is, is a projection. It's not a goal because in the contract, there is no provisions that talk about what happens if the firm doesn't meet a projection based on what they are. So I wasn't here when this was signed in fourteen, but what I would say is, if you're looking at the letter of the agreement, it's not a goal, it's not a metric, it was a projection that was placed in this agreement when it was consummated in fourteen. I've asked Elena to talk about typically what is a best practice so that as you look at putting something in an agreement, that it puts in what's consistent across the board in other cities. When it was done in thirteen and fourteen, it was not a goal. Normally it's P and I, principal and interest. In this case, this is based on the levy only. So if you look at in your packet, and I think we shared examples of Sugar Land and others, it's specifically, but it's specific to base P and I, which in this case, this is levy only and it's a projection. So if you want to, you can just talk about typically what's the best practice as it relates to this and that this is not a goal or a metric.
Okay, so I'll talk to contracts in general when it comes to having goals or performance measures within the contract. Normally you'll have some clauses within the contract that'll state what is to occur if they aren't meeting that. Normally you'll have a notice to cure. So we would have possibly performance reviews or reports that are required from them so that we'll be able to track whether or not they're meeting that. And if they aren't, then we will meet with them to see if there's ways that they can increase that. And if it is the desire of the council and the city, then we can possibly terminate based on them not reaching those goals. But we do provide notices to cure, meaning that we do have a partnership with the vendor where we're reviewing their performance based on what's said in the agreement. What we have in the agreement is levy only. The information that I have is the attorney fees, which include the statutorily, statutory amount of fifteen percent of levy plus principal and interest. And so as far as being able to make the calculation now, we would have to contact the tax assessor collector to be able to get the penalty and interest portion removed, which would take some time to do.
And I think the other point in this too, mayor, in looking at the clause, if at any time during the initial term, there was indication that the firm was not performing, then they would have to be noticed by a certain period of time. Since two thousand thirteen, when this agreement was consummated, because it was a projection and not a goal or a metric, it made it pretty difficult to hold someone accountable based on their projection. And in this instance, what we can do, even if today, going all the way back to two thousand thirteen, we get from the county assessor and then getting what their processes are to come up with the number. And let's just say hypothetically, the number in one year is high, next year is low, et cetera. We have not, based on this, because it was not considered to be a goal or a metric, it was a projection of what they think they would do. And there's no penalty associated with them, not in this contract that was signed many, many years ago, that says this is accountability for that occur.
Now, I know distinctly during that last, I know you weren't here.
Yes, ma'am.
That conversation that those standards were set up, those goals were set up for the very reason of making sure that they were performing as the highest standard. I guess we won't, I mean, you won't be able to get us anything tonight.
No, ma'am, at this point, because as I stated, this, it was a projection that was placed in the agreement. In order to get a number, we would need to get the tax assessor to provide a number and then that tax assessor would need to work with Limebarger. The good thing is, in this case, we have a mechanism for it to be month to month to, that Limebarger would be able to provide the services so there's no drop in service. At this point though, if the will of the council is not to take action, then we can move forward. But we just want to share with you that based on the agreement, because it wasn't a goal, at least, and keep in mind, a good majority of the staff that oversees this are relatively new, but in reading the contract, it does not specify a goal or metric, it's a projection. So they probably would not have looked at that as relates to something that needs to be done. It wasn't done prior to them and it hasn't been going forth. But if the intent is to get information, we can provide you with the information.
I personally would, because I just, of course, was here during the last conversation. I would like to know if they've met the, you know.
The projection.
Projections that were set out or whatever, I mean, before I vote, I mean, so. But, you know, I'm just one voice.
Well, I just want to say, whenever I, prior to coming to these meetings, you know, I try to pride myself in doing my research, being prepared, and I try to trust that the competent staff that we have in Missouri City have done their due diligence. I know there were a few glitches on the evaluation thing there, which I think are significant to Mayor Protem's point, that we need to make sure we address moving forward, but it's good to know it's just an anomaly there. But I guess my point is, staff has done their due diligence and prepared us with all the information we need. And I also try to trust that, you know, now we have, instead of seventy-two hours, we have ninety-six hours, that we receive the packet of information so that when we have any questions, concerns, we can send those questions to staff and ask those questions. More importantly, this went before our Finance and Services Committee.
Oh, correction. The Finance and Services Committee did not get a copy of that contract.
No, I said the item.
The item did, yes, but they didn't get a copy of that contract.
Right. The item went before the Finance and Services Committee and so I would like to think that many of the questions that we're receiving here today on the day is either would have been asked there or, you know, prior to our meeting today. So I guess my only concern is, you know, if it's gone, staff has done their due diligence, we've done our due diligence, hopefully, prior to coming here. And then, of course, it went before the chair, I mean, the Finance and Services Committee that, you know, with the adequate information that's been requested and considering the contract, if we want to look at the contract and, you know, vote tonight, fine, or if we want to hold off to the next meeting, I don't know. I just want to put that out there that I feel comfortable that if it's gone through all those steps and, you know, we're able to verify some of the questions that we've asked, you know, tonight, you know, why not vote tonight? That's just my position.
To give you a little clarity for our Financial Service Meeting, we were missing some information that Anthony sent us and as well as Elena as regarding, just some clarity that we needed to make a clear concise decision and that information was given to us later on after the meeting. So we didn't make a, we didn't have a positive recommendation, it was still information that we needed, so just to give you a little background on that.
I'm on that committee, but I also remember that we said that we would get the information, which I think was the breakout by evaluator, which is what Mayor Protem asked for, and that we would have that and we would still, with that, still be able to make a decision because what you had is, what the evaluator did on each of those categories really, to me, had no bearing on whether or not you went with the staff's recommendation or against it. So I understand we had the information that we wanted, we got it, but again, I don't think it was really pertinent or relevant to the, to the decision as to whether or not we would go along with the staff's recommendation or not.
And that information was provided, I think, on Friday morning.
Because that was, to me, that, as I understand, that was the intent, is to get that information to Mayor Protem and to the committee so that when we came here Monday, we could make a decision as to whether or not we accepted the staff's recommendation.
City manager, just go over again, you said the contract, those are not objectives. What I stated is that in section two point oh four, the verbiage reads, "The firms projected delinquent tax collection percentages levy only for each year under this agreement, starting with tax twenty-three R," and it lists those out. There's nothing in here that says it shall, it's, there's nothing in here that states. I'm just saying, if it was me and I put together this agreement, I would have more ironclad accountability as relates to if, again, I wasn't here when this was put together, but I would say if they don't meet these, here's the penalty. Here are the consequences of that.
And that's not in there.
But if they said they were going to do it, shouldn't we know if they did it or not?
Well, I think in this case, I would not have put, I would not have said projected. I would say what is realistic. A projection, as you know, you can make it, you can't make it, all depends on variables. If Hurricane Harvey occurs, I mean, there are so many outs when you talk about projections that can impact the number. I'm just saying, to me, based on the percentages that I'm looking at here, I would push for what is a definitive in light of those circumstances that may occur. But again, I wasn't here when it was consummated, when it was put in place. I'm just saying, what I'm seeing before me, there's a big difference between a projection, goal, and a metric and the accountability associated with it.
So the Councilmember Edwards' point, is there a way in the negotiation of the contract to include that verbiage?
Oh, without, at this point, if I have anything to do with it, I would be sitting down to try to look at what best practice because clearly, if you look at some of their other relationships with other cities, to look at, how do we look at it? Is it levy only? Do we look at base principal and interest? There are other things that you can put in there in negotiations and say, here's some things that we think are realistic so that we can be able to not hold them accountable, but be able to say, here's what we believe are best practices moving forward.
And I get that. Don't get me wrong, I get, you know, whether or not, you know, did we penalize them, did we send them out a letter? But I, you know, being here during the last discussion, I know what the intent was. So I guess to make a decision tonight, I would like the information, but I know you said you guys can't get it because I know there was a long drawn out discussion at the last time this contract was discussed about making sure they met those goals. But I know you weren't here, so.
I don't.
I know you weren't here.
Together we excel.
So I'm not trying to throw you under the bus because you weren't here, but yeah, so.
And more importantly, we're not trying to cast any kind of shadow on the firm as well. This is about, you know, information. This is about getting the information with the responsibility that we have. This is about getting the information with the responsibility that we have to make informed decisions for this community. And so, you know, I echo the mayor's sentiments on wanting that information prior to casting the vote.
Okay.
Where are we?
We need a motion in a second. We basically just brought the agenda item back.
For me, I'm at a point where we have to trust staff. There's a lot of due diligence, a lot of scoring. My motion is to accept staff recommendation, however, to modify the new agreement with teeth in it. Let's go after the metrics, let's measure them hard. And for Limebarger, you guys are real close. The numbers are tight. You've got some cleanup to do. Show us what you got. Otherwise, next time, it's not going to be this generous. That's my motion.
I second that.
Yeah.
We have a second by Boni? All those in favor? All opposed? I'm away from the dais. I can't make a decision. I need the information.
I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
Motion passes. And Councilmember Preston, any comments?
Well, congratulations and I want to say kudos to the police department for the coffee. It was a great event. You know, just to show that...
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Likewise.
And I'm sorry, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Edwards.
Yes, also, the Coffee with the Cops was a wonderful event. I really admire how the cops take a really great initiative to get involved with the community. Everyone's always just happy to be around. I know they were trying to get us so many coffee mugs. It was great. Also, I wanted to remind the citizens to, if you know anyone that could potentially apply for the CDBG grant scholarship for the secondary post vocational scholarship award, please encourage them to apply. The scholarship has been extended to July 31st, so Wednesday at 5:00. So, if you know anyone that could potentially apply or could receive those funds, please encourage them. It's a very... It's helpful. It's very helpful in college, so please encourage someone. I have tangible copies if anyone wants the application or you can email me personally. I will submit it to you, so thank you.
Councilmember Emery.
Yeah, I would second what Council Lady Hendrick said because as I recall, a couple of years, a few years ago, we had money left over from the scholarship, but we couldn't find scholarship candidates. So, you know, that was just dollars that were laying out there that some needy individuals could have had access to. So, I commend you for bringing that up and we need to make sure we spend that money where it's best used and that's the scholarships.
Councilmember Boni?
Yeah, I want to concur with my colleagues. I also went out there to the Coffee and Cop. I shouldn't have had those two donuts, but I did. But I think I worked them off a little bit. But anyway, I also want to, you know, I was listening to the Credo, Together We Excel, and she brought up the scholarships. You know, I've been serving on that CDAC committee for going on over seven years now and just to see the millions of dollars we've been able to put back into the community to do housing rehabilitation, scholarships, feeding the elderly, literacy, you know, helping, you know, nonprofits in the area. I mean, it just really shows that, you know, we're able to really impact our community whether you are well-to-do or you have some challenges financially. You know, we, together, we do excel and I'm just very, very honored to be a part of this group.
Councilmember Marulis?
Police are going to get props tonight, I guess, from all of us. I did a ride-along Saturday night and I learned a lot about what it takes to serve the community, to protect and serve. And I just want to thank the police officers for the way they handle our citizens, good and bad, because there are some bad, but thank you all for what you do and for how you protect our city.
Councilmember Pearson?
I concur. The cops are going to get a lot of accolades. I actually also attended the Coffee with the Cops and it was a great event and I've actually gotten some feedback from some of my constituents and they were very pleased with it. Also, I sit on the CDBG committee also, and in this climate where there's always a conversation about student debt, I really encourage any students to take advantage of the scholarships that are available. And I just want to say compliments to Mayor Protem. In our last meeting, we discussed reallocating to actually increase the scholarship amount. So, I just encourage everyone to please take a look at that and take advantage of it.
Well, I'm going to say ditto to all my colleagues up here and not repeat everything that was just said. If that is everything, we will adjourn the regular meeting. We don't have executive session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but we will reconvene the special meeting. We have one agenda item left.